All right, good morning, everyone. Today's date is June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, it's nine a.m. We're here to conduct our Commissioners' Court meeting. Our first item is our pledge and invitational invite. Commissioner Cornell, so if you would please sign.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Battle with your invocation. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for the gift of this new day, for all the days you've given us. Father, I want to thank you for allowing us to live in a abundant and a comfortable life. And just pray your continued blessings on Hill County and on our families, Father. Today, I just want to remember and pray for our police officers across the nation as they go through some very first times. I pray for their safety and their well-being today, and I pray you can just take them all safely to their families, and I pray that they receive the respect and the support that they deserve. Heavenly Father, I want to remember Monica and the Valderris family today, as she suffers a loss for her daughter last night in an automobile accident. Just pray for her and for the other families that are involved in this accident, and I just ask that you comfort them as only you can during this tremendous time of loss. Father, I pray these things in Jesus' name and for our sake.
All right. My first item this morning is approved or amended. It's a regular meeting of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and our special meetings of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and June four, twenty twenty-one. You've all had a chance to look those over. Do I hear a motion to approve this written?
All opposed.
Motion made by Commissioner King, February second.
All opposed.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, our next item on the agenda is from our county audit.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Okay, the first item I have is a line item transfer, and it is from account number zero one zero four nine zero four five seven one. Elections office equipment in the amount of five hundred ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents to zero one zero four nine zero four three five one. Elections machine maintenance for five hundred ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents.
I really wouldn't listen to that, so I could... Okay, we've heard the request to vote funds from the election office equipment into election maintenance machinery in the amount of five ninety-four point four nine. Do I hear a motion to approve this line item transfer?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
The next item I have is to approve the appointment to the third position on the investment committee and to allow the county judge and commissioners to sign the order of appointing the Hill County Investment Committee.
Do we have, as far as our third party, that has always been one of our Commissioners? And so Harold King has been to this class, and he's in good standing, so do I hear a motion to entertain Harold King?
I'll make that motion, all right.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of placing Harold King on our committee, Investment Committee, which just for the record will be Ida Tyler, Melinda Silva, and Harold King. All those in favor of Harold, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
The next item I have is to approve the twenty twenty annual report and authorize payment of the twenty twenty-one stipend for the Oulton Volunteer Ambulance Association Incorporated. And do you want to read that, Judge, or do you want me to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And we did receive the annual financial report for the Oulton Volunteer Ambulance Association, and it was from October twenty nineteen through September twenty twenty. And the... Their total income was two hundred and six thousand forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Their total expense was a hundred and ninety thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents, leaving a net income of fifteen thousand four oh eight, four hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents. And then their Oulton EMS run long for FY twenty nineteen, they transported two hundred and twelve. There were sixty refusals, canceled were seven. D O S, there were three. Unfounded, there were nine. In standbys, there were eighteen.
All right, you've heard the Oulton Volunteer Ambulance Report from Melinda, as per our request to, and I would assume they are submitting this report and also requesting the decision that we could trigger. How much is that?
It's thirty-five hundred dollars off. I'm sorry.
So do I hear a motion to approve this report and to authorize the payment of their stipend? Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And the last item I have is to ratify the county judge's signature on the U.S. Department of the Treasury Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Award Terms and Conditions. And this is in regards to the relief funds that we are getting...
Rescue.
Rescue America, monumentally. And we have received half of those funds last week. We're still waiting for the guidelines to come out, but in order to be registered and request those funds, the judge had to go ahead and sign everything on DocuSign, and so we're just asking the court to ratify that.
So you've heard from Melinda in regards to these Rescue America funds that we did receive, there was some time deadlines involved, so had to go ahead and sign those documents. So do I hear a motion that we could ratify my signature on these items and to accept this money from the U.S. Department of the Treasury? Make a motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? We did talk on Friday about what delay. There's a register that they're taking until the middle of July as to what they'd like to see the funds being able to use for them, and so my recommendation would be that we wait until that register is complete and see what they authorize the expenditure of those funds for. Any other discussion?
Does that count a lot? You have to read one thing before you know what it is.
Well, you know, it's got infrastructure, but so much of it is specific to cause, where I know some of the registrars, they've tried to get it broadened some of the scope of the Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. All right, our next item is from the Treasurer's Office.
Okay, on behalf of the Treasurer, I am presenting an item for under accounts payable, and it is, it was a check that we did on June fourth for fuel in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, and that was done on June fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, you've heard that of accounts payable in the amount of sixteen thousand three seventy-nine point nine four for fuel. Do I hear a motion to approve that expenditure? Make a motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item or my items, I did present the Health Center EMS Financial Report from May on Friday, so do I hear a motion to approve those or that report from Health Center EMS?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The next item we have is in regards to our set inspections. We had a situation occur. Mr. Hittolito, of course, has retired, but he and I had a conversation prior to his retirement, and he will continue to do those inspections until we have someone in place to do them, but through a contract basis. But he has been out of pocket this month, and so we can allow an individual out of Clark County that does those inspections in Clark County to do one here. And so I would ask the court to approve us being able to allow other vendors, if Mr. Hittolito's available, to conduct those inspections. Do I hear that? Or can I get someone to place that in form of motion?
I'll send them to you.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then my last item is on the proposed holidays for twenty twenty-two. And this is Tuesday, Friday. I'll just read them out for the record. New Year's Day will be January third, that's a Monday. Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January seventeenth. Good Friday, of course, is Friday, April fifteenth. Memorial Day is a Monday, May thirtieth. Independence Day is Monday, July fourth. Labor Day is Monday, September fifth. Veterans Day is Friday, November eleventh. Thanksgiving is Thursday and Friday, November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And our Christmas will be a Friday and a Monday, which would be December twenty-third and December twenty-sixth. Do y'all have any additions or additions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve these holidays? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, next item we have is the Sheriff's Office. Good morning.
First, we have a couple new hires. The first one is Crystal Alexander as an uncertified jailer, starting at a group thirteen, step one, five-month rate of ten, ninety-eight, twenty-six, hourly rate of twelve eighty-five. Start date was May twenty-fourth.
All right, here's the other one, same.
Different start date, but same pay.
Yeah, go ahead, give us that.
Elijah Trevino, and start date is June third.
All right, you've heard the request from Ellen in regards to these individuals. Crystal Alexander is Elijah Trevino, both starting at a pay group thirteen, step one. That's an hourly rate of twelve eighty-five per hour. Crystal, effective date is May twenty-fourth, and Elijah's June third. Do I hear a motion to approve adding these two to the paper? Make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And then the second thing is we had some air conditioning issues out of the jail. And we got a quote from Airgun Right, and they went ahead and shared authorized the parts and labor, replaced the order, and they came in quicker than we anticipated, so the work was just completed. It's a total cost of ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and I have to build here for a moment. And what it went towards was seven thousand five hundred went to replace two compressors, a wiring harness, two filter dryers, vacuum recharge with four ten A and one year warranty. And then the two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars was a floor assembly on a unit that keeps throwing the belts, and they were able to reuse that motor. These were in two different sections.
Four ten, it's a three.
Just reading the notes.
Okay, so you've heard the request in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to be paid in Airgun Right for work on these units.
Out of permanent improvement.
Okay, and it will be paid for out of the permanent improvement fund. So do I hear a motion to approve the pair? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Does the court need the quote to see that it matches?
Yeah.
That's all I have, ma'am, it needs some discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item we have is our District Attorney. Hi, Wally.
How are y'all this morning?
Good.
Good. I'm here to ask the court to authorize the county judge to enter into a lease or a copier. It's, those things don't go for four years, and now it is up. Y'all probably know, y'all probably know the same thing. We tried buying our own, and the cost of keeping the thing up exceeded what the lease agreement was. We are currently paying a little over two hundred and sixty dollars a month for a black and white machine. I can't say the first name on it. It's Copystar Multi-Punction, it's from Hollins, but it's a color copier, which we've got one in the office, but it's a small one, and so it gets kind of overused. And we really need color copies when we have solvent illnesses, that sort of thing, you can see injuries, that sort of thing, with black and white. But the good thing about this is the lease actually went down for an upgrade in what would get, it would be two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. So it's, in fact, it's a more complicated functioning copier than one we've got, and it's actually less. So we're asking for authorization, Judge, to enter into that lease.
Four years.
Four years, it's four years.
So he'll be picking the old one up?
He will, he will, and I don't, I don't know what they do with those, as long as we don't have to pay to get it fixed like we were having to before, the one time that we did. We tried it one time, and then I told him, it's a lot easier just to call Hollins and they come down and fix it.
Well, no, they think it's, when it's at the end of it, then you have to find something to do with it, so it's hard to get rid of, so. All right, you've heard the request from Wally to allow me to sign a lease agreement for four years with Holland, kind of a, or a color copier, in the monthly amount of two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank y'all, my mistake.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, next up is our District Clerk, Ann Prouse. Wally?
You too.
Good morning.
Hi, Carla.
Okay, did out everything he said, I won't get the sense bill on the copier. I'm paying two sixty, and I'm getting a color copier for two twenty-six, four years, so...
Is it forty-seven to two twenty-six, forty-seven, or?
Yeah. So I said, did out everything he said.
Okay, so you've heard the requests to allow me to enter into a lease agreement with Holland for a four-year contract on a new copier for the District Clerk's Office in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents per month payable to Holland Office by amount of... That's all right. Could I hear that in the form of a motion to approve that lease?
I'll make it.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion?
Yes, one discussion. I need to include the twenty-seven fifty maintenance agreement, and that just covers if it breaks, he comes, and, you know, we pay per copy, and he supplies all the ink, too.
Now, it's at two thousand seven hundred and fifty or twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
So whoever approved their, or made the motion, would you have made your motion to include the twenty-seven fifty?
Oh, would.
All right. Second. All right. Any other discussion?
I know I should have popped it down.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let me interrupt you just for a second. Going back to the other item, who made the motion for Wally's? Would you also include the twenty-seven fifty per month? Who didn't say?
Second.
All right. And knowing that we're going to add the twenty-seven fifty per month for Wally, is there any discussion? And I coughed a little bit on that for the agreement with Wally with the twenty-seven fifty per month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Actually, Carla told me that twice. I was just trying to go along with the person who told me.
We should have just charged her fifty-five.
Yeah. See y'all.
Okay, the other thing I'm here for is the virus protectors for all of the computers in all the counties, in all the counties, in all of our county, and we updated to more licenses because of all the laptops we added last year and computers, too. So it's a hundred and fifty dollars, and it's sixty dollars and four cents per computer. So the total amount is two thousand four hundred and six dollars, and it's payable to S H I Government Solutions. And I did check to see, you know, if there were other ones, and I talked to Tyler Technologies, and they still feel like this is the best one.
And what's the term of this? For a year?
It's a year, yes. It's just for a year.
Okay, all right. So you've heard the request to purchase the E S E T antivirus for all the county computers for a total cost of two thousand four oh six per year payable to S H I Government Solutions for a one-year virus protection. Do I hear that? Can I get someone to put that in the form of a motion? Make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? Now, this will keep, like sometime when I get on and wants me to upgrade my virus protection...
Once I let them know that it's been approved, then it should automatically. If it doesn't, call me. There was an upgrade, and I tried to, and I know I did yours, but now it'll just update it to automatically expire on five thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
But basically, if we get any other requests for antivirus, we should ignore it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, a lot of them come, that Mac feed comes on the computer, and it's like thirty days, so it'll pop up and drive you crazy, but just decline.
That's protected from something like that, colonial biplane.
And we hope. I doubt it. But, you know, that's why, why I can check it, things, but the thing about Hill County, and I've checked and double-checked, we're secure because our servers are not located here. We have servers located in Plano and servers located, a copy of that server is located in, like, North or South Carolina, so if we get hacked in one, all our data's on both. We can, you know, it's very unlikely we could get hacked in both. And that's, you know, that's what Tyler Technologies has told me, and I make them, you know, y'all check it right as they check it, they back it up, so.
That's good, we can help you.
So, you know, that's why I always check with them to make sure I'm getting the best virus protection for them, too, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion? Did we move on that, or? Okay, I know we have a motion and a second we were in discussion, so everyone in favor of paying S H I Government Solutions for this antivirus, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you, Carla.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, next up is Deborah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I kind of just wanted to present my new hire, Cassie Schaefer, going to be twenty hours per week, pay group eleven, step one, and she's twelve dollars, forty-four cents an hour. Her start date is June, June one.
All right. So you've heard the request to hire Cassie Schaefer for twenty hours per week and a pay group eleven, step one, for twelve forty-four per hour, effective June first. Do I hear a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome aboard, Cassie.
Thank you. I've been taking her with me on my daily activities. I go to the Sheriff's Office and, and, and all the here. Have we ever done an interview, or have you already known?
Yeah, I know Cassie.
Then they know her real well.
I haven't done an interview with any of them, but I've already known her.
Like I said, Cassie, pay attention to Deborah, she's always done outstanding job for us.
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item is from Commissioner Presley.
Yes, I wanted to discuss our going to work in the Downtown Association here, and the problem is probably the engine goes wrong, and it's more likely to be basically the shrubbery out here around the historical monument on the southeast corner. Ford House is looking pretty bad, and... the southeast corner, the courthouse is looking pretty bad, and it, uh, needs to be removed and cleaned up, and, uh, they have offered to do that, and cover down removal, and it's only expensive to the county, uh, the only thing we have to maybe treat it was some chemical to keep it coming back, and, uh, I think it would be a big improvement, you know, looking up, looking at that, so, uh, I would make the motion that we have to allow them to remove those shrubs.
Okay, you've heard the request from Commissioner Daniel, allow that shrubbery to be removed, uh, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, and then our next item is Commissioner Precinct.
Okay, uh, we had a auction, we listed some items on, uh, L S O auctions, and they ended on, uh, May twenty-third, two thousand, twenty-one. Anyway, uh, when we had sold some items on there, and the total number received was seventy-eight thousand, and, uh, and there were some items we didn't get for dead, so. Sheriff's Office had three vehicles, and then I had two items.
Okay, all right, uh, you heard a motion, okay, you've heard the request from Jimmy, uh, on the long star auction, uh, to, on items sold in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, do I hear second, uh, to approve, or, uh, you got this to approve, this money, uh, being raised, the long star auction, where does it go?
Um, it'll actually go, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars will go back into the sheriff's vehicle lineup, 'cause he'll use those to purchase his new vehicles this year, 'cause he wouldn't use those as train, and then the other fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars goes back into Precinct Ford's revenue, um, for sale of, uh...
Equipment?
Equipment, and it, it'll be, uh, fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And it'll go back into his revenue.
So, that's, we're both to accept that amount of money and also remove it back into those lineups that we just talked about, so I have a motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel, any discussion? Thank you, Jimmy, for putting that on there and doing that for us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Jimmy, go ahead.
Well, the next item we have is to purchase chip seal rod, uh, thirty-five dollars, uh, processing, it's up there by the water hatch, uh, they have a little one to try to find, uh, road bridge, uh, for, for, uh, yesterday, Harold and I talked to them, it was kind of need some chip rod for, for, so we got, they think this, this year, so, we're thinking about twenty thousand dollars for it.
And, I'm sorry, Jimmy, can you give us first from my hotel?
Uh, McMillan.
McMillan? Okay. Thank you. All right, you put that in form, the motion, the motion, all right, uh, you've heard the motion to buy, uh, about twenty thousand dollars, uh, chip seal rod from McMillan, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King, uh, any discussion?
Are you talking about paying for that out of that ducting, for the bridge? So, if you are, then we need that in the motion.
Okay, and this twenty thousand dollars will be paid for out of on day name, which is road bridge, and you put that in your motion?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, uh, I have one other thing to go back up on, on item, heard the County Treasurer, uh, she wants a special call meeting on June twenty-fourth at two P M. We'll have, uh, Ernesto Calindo, who is a risk management consultant with TACT, who would like to make the court, uh, regarding updates on insurance and, uh, introducing some new TACT staff members to us, so, um, just, just be aware that we'll set a special meeting date for that time, and also, in Friday's discussion, we had talked about a situation on June twenty-eighth, where, uh, a couple of us will be in training, uh, in the Metroplex, and we'll have a couple there that'll be gone, and so, we will move our June twenty-eighth regular meeting to, uh, June twenty-fifth, that Friday, at nine thirty. So, we'll place our workshop, our regular meeting, and we will not have a meeting on June twenty-eighth, yeah, so, just so y'all be aware, we're gonna have one on the twenty-fourth at two, and one on the twenty-fifth at nine thirty, so. All right, and I don't think there's any action needs to be taken on those, just, uh, for information, for, you know, the calendar, so.
About thirty-seven?
Nine thirty on the twenty-fifth, so, uh, if there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda items today, and we'll be adjourned at nine thirty-seven A M. Thank you.
Thank you.